Hello, everyone. Andre Baumgartner here, your state representative for the 41st district consisting of Groton, Mystic, and Stonington. I'm here to share some very important news with you. In the next few weeks, or depending on when and where you're watching this video, perhaps in a few days, you'll be voting in your municipal elections on Tuesday, November 7th. It's so critically important that each and every one of you throughout every neighborhood in our corner of the state to participate in your local elections, where you'll be voting for your first-electman or mayor, you'll be voting on your town councils, RTMs, Board of Finance, or your Board of Education. Here in Groton and Stonington, in Groton, for example, I once served on the Groton Town Council for five years. And the council is responsible for crafting budgets for the town, for town operations, and works collaboratively with our Board of Education on crafting a budget for the schools in our community. And the Stonington side, they have a first-elect person who functions as their municipal CEO. And you'll have the opportunity to vote for one of many candidates in Stonington, for example, for first-electman, as well as Board of Finance. And the Groton side of the river, it's very important to flip your ballot because you'll also have the chance to vote for an RTM representative. The RTM body is a body consisting of more than 45 of your community members, representing a cross-section of every neighborhood, and also responsible for crafting our town's budget in partnership with our town council. Why are our local elections so important? As I've illustrated to you, these are the folks who are thinking about the long-term planning of our community, thinking about our future. This is where government literally, where the rubber hits the road. These are the folks we elect to these bodies will rebuild our schools, will fix our potholes. And so it's so important that we elect folks to these positions, but it's also important that we have strong voter turnout to ensure that we get folks who care deeply, we elect folks who care deeply about our community, and most importantly, folks who vote in our community are invested in our community. And so I ask and implore each and every one of you to participate in your local democracy. This is something that I think each and every one of us take for granted, especially when we see the world right now. It is a cornerstone of this country to vote, to participate in this beautiful experiment called democracy. So I ask you on Tuesday, November 7th, please go to your polling place, and if you can't make it to your polling place, vote via absentee ballot and use your vote as your voice. Thank you, and go vote on Tuesday, November 7th, in your local municipal election.
Hello, Groton. My name is Adam Puccino. I am currently a district representative for the RTM, and I'm running for town council. I've been married to my beautiful bride, Melissa, for 37 years. We have three grown and married children and four beautiful grandchildren. I'm an owner of a small business right here in Groton, and I've spent 25 years in the armed forces. I'm a retiree. I served 13 in the Navy Seabees, nine in the Coast Guard, and three in the Army National Guard right here in Connecticut. I worked another eight and a half years at the Public Works Department on the sub-bass, serving our warfighters. Six of those years as the chief union steward, serving the union members of the MTC. I'm the only candidate currently who is running as a veteran, and I will be the only candidate with a veteran's perspective. My big three focus points are education, downtown Mystic parking, and open spaces. I do have one more. I want to keep that mill rate as steady and as low as possible. The town property reuse policy needs to be a document that is easy for both developers and staff to negotiate. We don't need our town staff jumping through hoops unnecessarily to then have the developers just move on to another town where it's easier to deal with them, leaving our town staff's hard work wasted. I also believe a little spending on parks and services and other activities will draw in more residents to Groton, which will, I believe, draw in more businesses to Groton, which will definitely draw in more revenue to Groton and lower our taxes. I hope you can support my bid for town council, and please don't forget to vote on November 7th. Polls open at 6:00, they close at 8:00 p.m. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Dan Gieske, and since August 8th, 2023, I've had the privilege and honor to serve as your town councillor here in Groton. This November 7th, I am kindly asking for your vote in the upcoming town council election. I hope I can continue to be an enthusiastic and energetic voice for our community. I have lived in Groton my whole life, and I'm a proud product of the Groton school system, and at 23 years old, I am the youngest candidate on the ballot. Please do not confuse my age with lack of experience, since I have been involved in Groton government since I was 15 years old. I served as the student liaison to the Groton Board of Education for two years, and then in 2020, I had the privilege of being appointed to the Groton Fair Rent Commission, which I held that position until my recent appointment to the council. I have also had the privilege to work in an office or campaign capacity for U.S. Congressman Joe Courtney, Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysowicz, and Groton's own state representatives, Joe Dela Cruz and Christine Conley. These distinguished leaders have taught me to respect all citizens regardless of their political affiliation, background, and diversity. I feel so blessed to live in such a diverse community, and I have learned traditions from previous generations that have come before me, my generation, and I hope to preserve and create new traditions for future generations that follow. I want to live in Groton my entire life. I love it here. It is my home, it's where I've grown up, it's where my friends are, it's where my family is, and there is no greater reward than serving you. My ideas for the council include expanding housing supply. In southeastern Connecticut as a whole, we lack a supply in all types of housing. I want to continue the work that the council has currently done, which is sell two former vacant schools to developers and created housing developments. This has gotten the housing developments back on the property, the housing developments added to the tax rolls, which has stabilized our tax base and kept taxes at a minimum. This is important because we have 4,000 to 5,000 new workers coming in EB in the coming years, and we need to make Groton a place where they can live, work, and enjoy this community. I also hope to seek to improve our resiliency to climate change by making Groton climate resilient and the town energy efficient. As a coastal community, we are deeply affected by rising sea levels and the possible flooding that comes with it. In Groton, we need to be prepared for the changes that are upcoming. I will always continue to support the Groton Public School System, our libraries, the Groton Police Department, Groton Parks and Recreation, and Human Services, because as a citizen in Groton, I've had to take advantage of all of these resources. They have been great, and I want to preserve them so all citizens can have the benefits that they need. I humbly ask for your vote this November 7th, and please vote for me, Dan Gieske, in box 8A.
Hello, my name is Jill Rusk, and I'm running for Groton Town Council. My husband and I have lived in Groton for over 25 years. While we came here for the Navy, Groton quickly became our home. Groton is where we chose to raise our three now-adult children and to stay after military retirement. I work in a nonprofit organization working to reduce food insecurity in southeastern Connecticut. I have always believed it is important to do what you can to serve your community. I served as ombudsman on the USS Connecticut for three years, helping to bridge the gap between the crew and families. I was appointed to the City of Groton Youth Advisory Board and served for four years on the Groton City Council. I'm currently on the Board of Trustees for the Bill Memorial Library. For the past four years, I've been a District 3 representative on the Representative Town Meeting, or RTM. I served as chair for the Public Safety Committee, and for the past two years was elected by the full RTM to serve as moderator. This has taught me a lot about leadership and governing. I believe Groton should be a great place for all people to live, work, and play. I am focused on increasing housing and new businesses in Groton. I am someone who understands that many in our community struggle to pay their monthly bills. As a council, we need to remember that when we do things that affect taxes, we need to be sensitive to all members of our community. At the same time, I support funding our libraries, social services, our schools, our recreation and outdoor programs, improving our roads, and supporting public safety. I will always focus on balancing those two competing needs. As a team player, I believe in respect and working together across party lines to solve issues in our community. I believe that we can hear all opinions respectfully and openly. I'd be honored to be elected to the council this November and respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Hello, Groton. I'm Rachel Franco, one of your town councillors. If you know me, you know I like to get things done. I don't just sit at the council and talk and talk, I help make things happen. So I'm going to cut through the typical speech particulars and share with you my Groton top 10 list of proud accomplishments. Number 10, I had the idea to create the Groton Beautification Committee, a group of dedicated volunteers who are making Groton beautiful. Number nine, I successfully championed to increase Groton's rainy day fund from 11% to 15%, saving responsibly keeps Groton in a great position with credit agencies and when emergencies arise. Number eight, I successfully advocated for lights at the middle school and athletic fields. Number seven, during my tenure, we achieved more in terms of environmental protections than any previous council. We also installed the first bike path in Groton. Number six, I helped create a veterans and war memorial committee that will oversee Groton memorials and will hold community events. Number five, I worked on the William Sealy and Colonel Ledger School property sales, which will become apartment complexes and bring greatly needed housing to Groton. Number four, working as a team, we distributed our federal American Rescue Plan money. We invested in new sidewalks, Sutton Park, new lights and upgrades at the hockey rink, new outdoor lighted pickleball courts, upgraded baseball fields, and many more recreational and facility improvements. We also awarded hero pay to our police, firefighters, and ambulance crews for their service during COVID. Number three, I championed giving three years of money from opioid lawsuits to Groton's Community Speaks Out, which is fully staffed by volunteers. That means 100% of the money will go directly to opioid and substance recovery efforts for those in need. Number two, over my time on the council, I have worked to keep our taxes flat. I am proud to say Groton has one of the lowest taxes in the state of Connecticut. Number one, for so many years, residents in the aquatic bridge fire district have paid more than their fair share in fire district taxes, the highest district tax in town, actually. No one could find a solution. I said, let's figure this out, and brought the issue forward. We agreed to increase the money Groton receives from the state, called the pilot money, to the fire districts, especially aquatic bridge. Residents there should notice a decrease in their taxes next year. This policy was hailed by Fire Chief Driscoll as the biggest piece of legislation any town council has had before them that would so positively help the fire districts. I'm Rachel Franco, and that's what I'm about. I love and care about my hometown community and the residents who live here. I hope I have earned your support on November 7th, and you can find my name on row A, Rachel Franco.
Hello, Groton friends and neighbors. My name is David McBride, and I'm a current town councillor seeking reelection to the Groton Town Council. I have resided in Groton since I was a kid, off and on during my college years, and permanently since 1999. I have a bachelor's degree from Seton Hall, an MBA from UConn, and I have over 30 years of experience in finance, government, management, small business, economic development, and nonprofits. These experiences include being the current Director of Finance for the City of New London, the past Director of Finance for the Mohegan Tribe, the founder of the James A. Greenleaf Memorial Scholarship Fund, the past president, treasurer, and director of the Public Works for Groton Long Point, and I'm also a part-owner of several small businesses and a part-time faculty member in business at Mitchell College. On the council, I have proven to be a dedicated, pragmatic, resident-focused, and fiscally-conservative councillor who acts professionally and makes decisions that are in the best long-term interest of the entire town. I have proven myself in numerous capacities, ranging from detailed reviews of the budgets, the proper use of ARPA funding, the chair of the Public Safety Committee, the chair of the Public Property Reuse Committee, a member of the Personal Appointments Committee, and performing the ongoing tasks and responsibility of a councillor. There are numerous key initiatives I would like to pursue if I'm lucky to be re-elected. First off, I'd like to ensure that the numerous vacated school properties are brought forward to determine the best use for the properties. This needs to include a fair and transparent focus that involves the entire Groton community. Secondly, I'd like to focus on some housing initiatives, such as establishing a rental assistance program, a first-time homebuyer's program, and the development of a detailed process to review all matters pertaining to short-term rentals so that the council can properly address this important matter. I would also like to see the council perform a detailed review of the parking situation in downtown Mystic, which should include a review and discussion of all pertinent potential options and alternatives so that some solutions can actually be implemented to solve the issues before they become insurmountable. I'd also like to see some increased focus on economic development throughout the entire town. Excluding the prior year's revaluation, the town's grant list over the past eight years has actually decreased. We need to focus on how to grow the grant list, or the continued increases of any cost of government will be borne by the taxpayers through increased taxes, and I don't believe anyone would like this. I'd also like to have a more detailed review of the town's operating and capital budgets. ARPA funding previously has allowed the town to complete many high priorities and initiatives. However, these funds have now been encumbered, so it's going to make some difficult decisions for the town next year during the budget process. My experience in municipal budget can and will assist this process. I've also sent a referral to the council to consider hiring an additional employee specifically focused on grant matters. There is a tremendous amount of state and federal funding that's available, and this additional employee could assist in bringing more financial resources to the town. I made a referral for the town last year to develop and maintain a long-term, 10-plus-years consolidated cash flow that can be used to project how financial decisions that are being made today will affect the town's future and the mill rate in the future. I think it's integral to the town to implement such a plan next year and to assist with making sound financial decisions. I've also submitted a referral for the establishment of a stormwater authority, the funds raised from such that are received fairly and equitably throughout the entire town, including from tax-exempt entities who currently do not pay taxes for services they receive from the town. These funds that are generated from the authority can then be used to provide the funding that's necessary for the numerous coastal resiliency initiatives the town is planning. I also support establishing a Board of Education non-lapsing fund, as such has proven to be tremendously beneficial financially to other municipalities and something I believe the Board of Ed and the council should review further, as these funds can be used to further offset any Board of Education, educational budget increases. Groton residents, I am a team player who will continue to work for the greater good of the entire town. I have shown that I listen well to others and I respect everyone's opinions. This leadership and teamwork focus combined with my experience will prove beneficial if re-elected to the town council. I am asking for your support and vote in the upcoming election on November 7th. A vote for McBride is a vote for momentum. Thank you in advance for your consideration. I look forward to hopefully serving you in the future.
Hi, I'm Juliette Parker. Let me tell you a bit about myself. I grew up in aquatic bridge as the oldest of six children and graduated from Fitch High School in 1991. I raised my daughters in the city of Groton. One is a college graduate and the other is currently a senior in college. I have a bachelor's degree in legal studies. I have served as the City of Groton's Police Chief's Administrative Assistant for 16 years. I am a Connecticut certified municipal official. I have significant volunteer experience ranging from Groton Public School PTOs, Girl Scout Co-Leader, church volunteer, Groton Public Library, United Way Mobile Food Pantry volunteer, and various other community groups. I am running for reelection for town council. I was on the RTM District 2 for four years, from 2013 to 2017, and have been on the council since 2017. As a town councillor, I am the liaison to TVCCA and for the Board of Ed, Town Council, City Council, RTM Committee. My experience as a TVCCA board member has taught me that housing and food insecurity are significant problems in New London County. As a town councillor, we opened a community center, increased COLAs, built schools under budget, and many items for the benefit of the community. My reasons for running are to continue my commitment to the town and to continue to be a role model to others that show I am part of the solution. "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members," Coretta Scott King. Please vote for me, Juliette Parker, on November 7th. Thank you.
My name is Adrian Johnson, and I'm running for the Board of Education in the upcoming election on November 7th. My wife and I have two children currently enrolled in the district, and a third who recently graduated from Fitch Senior High in the class of 23 and is now studying at Brown University. Both my wife and I are lifelong Groton residents, attending Groton Public Schools from kindergarten through our high school graduation in 1994, and we plan on retiring one day on our family home near the Haley Farm in Groton. I received a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from URI and work as a consultant in the marine industry. My wife is a first-grade teacher in Lebanon, Connecticut. I hope to utilize my experience as an active parent of children in the district and the insight I gained from my wife as an educator to serve our town on the Board of Education. I have always been attentive to public education and feel that helping children reach their fullest potential is an essential part of the fabric of our community. We have great staff and administrators in Groton, and I'm committed to working with the board to help provide the best education possible for our students. It's no secret that literacy has been a hot topic in Groton and across the nation. Measurements of reading success have been relatively flat in Groton in comparison to the state as a whole, with approximately 40% of our third graders not meeting state standards in English language arts proficiency. I plan to work with the administration, school board, and teachers to implement a reading curriculum that not only meets state standards, but will have lasting impact in our district, prioritizing reading success in our kindergarten through third-grade students. Through the use of scientifically proven and research-based methods, we will have compounding results throughout the school system. By ensuring that we meet or exceed state goals on reading success in the early years, our students will be better prepared to use those skills in reading to learn, with a long-term goal of easing the demand on support services later on in their educational career. Through discussions with many parents in the district, there is also a desire for more rigorous instruction for our learners who excel in the later elementary school and middle school years. We have some programs in the high school, and I will work with the board and the administration to expand those programs, challenging the students who are ready for more rigorous learning early on. We have a fantastic staff in Groton, and we want them to stay. Prioritizing workplace satisfaction for our team is essential. Nationwide, school systems are having difficulties retaining experienced teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff. Employee retention has been a focus of the administration and Board of Ed, and I will continue in the efforts to ensure that Groton Public Schools is a desirable place to work. Teaching is obviously a tremendously demanding profession. Educators and support staff require not only the best programs to work with for student success, but also to feel trusted and appreciated by their students, parents, and the administration. Attracting the most qualified and dedicated staff and encouraging them to stay is fundamental for the success of our district. When we send our kids off to school, we want them to work to have the best opportunities possible in the classroom. The residents of Groton give so much to our schools, we owe it to our entire community to use those resources wisely, working towards the common goal of great outcomes for all of our children. I hold strong personal beliefs that receiving a quality public education is necessary for the prosperity of both individual students and our region as a whole. Through listening, learning, and constructively working with other members of the Board of Ed, I hope to serve the residents of Groton as a member of the elected Board of Education this upcoming fall. Thank you for your time. I hope to earn your vote this November.
Hi, my name's Rob Mead, and I'm running for Groton Board of Education. I currently work as the Transition Assistance Program Coordinator for the submarine base. My job currently is to work and make sure that sailors and their families are getting their best, their needs met as they're transitioning from the military to the civilian lifestyle, and part of that is working with parents and trying to figure out their needs. A parent myself, I have a four-year-old who's going into kindergarten soon. My focus has been on trying to figure out the best way to get these parents and their families the best education for their families, whatever that might be. Our military community here is pretty large, and their needs are various, but in general, our goal is to have the best education possible. My focus isn't so much on either side of the aisle as it is focusing on families and making sure that families have what they need, they're part of the situation, they're part of the school system, and they know what they're getting from the school and that they have a voice in the school. So hopefully, you'll vote for me on November 7th, and together, we can work on making sure that our kids get everything they need.
Hello, I'm Matthew Shulman. You elected me to Groton's Board of Education two years ago. I chair its Communication Committee, and I serve on the Policy Committee. Before retirement, I designed adult educational programs, taught English as a foreign language overseas, did strategic communication planning, and published a weekly newspaper in New York State. After retirement, I became a certified chaplain and served in hospitals in North Carolina and at L&amp;M Hospital. When I ran for school board in 2021, COVID was full-blown. I visited 1,200 or so Groton homes to learn firsthand about how COVID impacted their children's education. After listening, I developed three priorities to guide my work. They were, first, to reboot our mentoring program to help students in need; second, expand financial literacy education; and third, enhance school-community communications. We've made progress in all three areas. COVID devastated our mentoring program, reducing our volunteer pool from 125 to just two. With support from the board, we've bounced back. Superintendent Austin engaged existing staff, and our trained volunteer team now exceeds 60. We also received a grant to strengthen the program and hope to be at full strength this school year. Financial literacy. Beyond basic banking, all students need to understand loans, mortgages, and taxes. And since pensions and social security may change in the And since pensions and social security may change in the future, learning to invest for retirement is imperative. Students must also be able to recognize predatory loans to avoid crushing debt. Any adult without these financial skills will be at risk. So I advocated for increased financial training to equip our children for the financial realities they'll face in adulthood. After discussion, the board directed our Curriculum Committee to assess our current efforts, consult with faculty, and make recommendations to the full board. And let me point out that Groton started this process before Connecticut this year became the 21st state to mandate financial literacy for elementary, middle, and high school students. Communications. I strongly support two-way communications. Traditionally, Groton schools focused on communicating with parents and local governmental units. But in 2022, we surveyed town residents and asked what information folks want and how they want to receive it. As a result, we broadened our efforts to maintain good relations with the entire community. Check out our newly revised school and district websites. Additionally, the board adopted a communication plan that will, among other things, support PTOs across our schools, attract individuals and businesses to volunteer expertise, and to reach out to prospective parents. That's what we tried to do. If elected November 7th, or if reelected, God willing, November 7th, here are the priorities I want to address. Lifting up all students' academic performance remains goal number one. Groton did not escape the national decline in academic achievement due to COVID. Though in 2022-23, our performance scores were higher than most similar Connecticut schools, we've not met our goals. I'd like to be part of the board's continuing policy discussions to ensure that our students meet or exceed state standards in reading, writing, math, and science. COVID recovery may seem in the rearview mirror, but impacts linger. Groton schools use federal funds to add in-school and summer academic recovery programs with additional tutors, paraprofessionals, and support staff. Our challenge now is to continue to help struggling students while paying the costs in a fiscally prudent manner. This summer, Groton won a three-year grant from the State Education Department, allowing us to retain social workers hired with COVID relief funds. And in September, we won a $1.25 million grant over five years to enhance elementary school language arts instruction with an emphasis on the science of reading. We're not stopping there, but continue to pursue other grants targeting academic achievement without local tax impacts. Third, civics and community service. Our world needs adults who participate in civic life. Because instilling the importance of civic engagement is vital to our national security, I support expanding Groton's civics requirement. I also support expanding age-appropriate community service for graduation. These policies will strengthen our nation. As I did in 2021, I'm reaching out to listen and learn from as many Groton households as possible. Please share your hopes for our children to help guide my reflection and decision-making. Please contact me at mhs10@cornell.edu. That's m-h-s-one-zero at c-o-r-n-e-l-l.edu. I'm Matthew Schulman, candidate for reelection to the Groton Board of Education. Thank you for your consideration.